Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, June 6, 2016, City Council Work Session. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. And we're going to start right off with Matt here, who we are Skyping in. How you doing, Matt? How you doing, Matt?
Great, how you guys doing?
Great. We had to just make sure we had you off mute and all that good stuff. The first thing we're going to talk about is retail marketing for Watertown, the opportunities that you guys can present to us. And it's good to see you again from Las Vegas, absolutely. So, I'm going to let you guys just go ahead and talk to our city council. There's 10 of them here that make the decisions on what we do and do not do for the city, and we'll take it from there. Fair enough?
Perfect. I'll do some technical stuff real quick and share my screen with you all. Can you all see my, the Retail Strategies logo?
Yes, we can.
Perfect, perfect. Well, to introduce my, can you all see me still?
Yep, yep, you're looking good.
Okay. So, my name's Matthew P. Trump, the Chief Development Officer at Retail Strategies. I'm very excited to be talking with you guys about what we do at Retail Strategies. Beth Miller, to my right, is the Portfolio Director. We have the privilege of working with Watertown. Beth will be the primary point of contact. Beth has spent the past 10 years in retail real estate leasing and managing millions of square feet of retail space throughout the country. So, she's very experienced and would be a very good member of your team. So, I'm going to jump right into the presentation here. It should take about 10 minutes, and then we'll open up the floor for questions. So, let's do this. All right, so first off, obviously, thank you for the opportunity to present to you what we do at Retail Strategies. I think that you're going to find what we do provides communities throughout the country fits in line with the needs of your community. So currently, 70% of retail chains are going to expand this year, which adds an incredible endorsement for physical retail space. And Mayor, you saw, you know, out at recon this year in Las Vegas, there was over 40,000 attendees, which was the best attended ICSC since the recession, meaning retailers back, retailers are expanding, and it's time for your community to put your best face on and approach them about opportunities to expand into your market and why Watertown is a destination. So, what we're here to do at Retail Strategies, if we have the privilege to do so, is leave our mark on your community and leave a lasting impact through retail and retail attraction and development to the community. So, our team at Retail Strategies features over 26 retail real estate professionals with 180-plus years of retail real estate experience. We average on a client-to-staff ratio is five to one, meaning we're very hands-on. Members of our team have worked in a retail real estate capacity where the logos that you see below, our team, Costco, Cushing and Wakefield, Publix, BJ's Wholesale, Home Depot, et cetera. We are cut from the retail real estate cloth. We know what retailers need to expand, we know how to approach them, and we know what they're looking for. So, the goals of each partnership are to increase tax revenue, attract the desired businesses to the community, to improve the overall quality of life, and to create jobs within the market. But at Retail Strategies, it's not about what we're going to give you. We're going to give you more data, more real estate knowledge than you could ever want to have, but it's really about what we're going to build together in your community. So, our process begins with market analysis, taking the deepest dive into the community as humanly possible to understand what makes Watertown unique, what are the strategic data points that we need to present, what's the good pieces of real estate that the real estate director at ShopCo or Home Depot needs to see. We take all of that, the market analysis, that's data, real estate, and obviously the community input, and create a strategy around that. That strategy is presented to you roughly pay 90 to pay 120. And then we go out and implement that strategy on your behalf. So, we task a professional like Beth with calling on property owners, brokers, developers to tell them what the city has hired us to do and how we can be a resource to them. And then we have retail recruitment professionals behind Beth, who will be calling on the retailers and developers throughout the country to show them why Watertown is a destination and why they need to locate there. And obviously, at the end of that will be your results. And again, it goes over those goals that we just talked about, increased tax revenue, job creations, and new business opening their doors in your market that you want to see. But the thing about what we do is that it's a never-ending process. As new retailers come to town, that opens the door for you to attract other retailers. So, we are here to be your long-term advocate and partner to attract retail not only today, but in the future as the community grows. So, that's a brief 30,000-foot version. I'm not going to kind of dive into some of the unique things that we do in each of these spaces, but keep in mind, there's a lot that I'm not covering just for time's sake. So, again, the market analysis is research analytics, completely understanding the community from a real estate perspective. It's identifying underutilized strategic real estate assets. And the community input is, we want to become invested in Watertown and what you want your community to be from a retail perspective. We take into account, from a research perspective, you know, the trade area identification, gap analysis, psychographic profiles, real estate. It's bringing our team of retail real estate professionals to Watertown to be in your community, driving the market to, again, identify those areas for leasing, development, redevelopment, identifying, you know, traffic patterns, key intersections, et cetera. And then obviously, community input. We have a back-and-forth dialogue with you, not only through the first 90 days, but throughout the life of our partnership to understand what is going to be desired business, what's undesired within the community, what businesses do you want to try to not recruit because it could cannibalize some great entrepreneurial opportunities in your market, et cetera. So, one of the unique things that we do, that I spoke with the mayor about, is this mobile data collection, where we can essentially put a radius ring around retailer in your market and identify where consumers are coming from based upon their cellphone and their locations-enabled services. So, in a market like Watertown, which we trade from a very, very large area, retailers will have a tough time identifying how large that area is unless other retailers are sharing how the store's performing. So, this is a great way to define your trade area very accurately, and we can approach retailers with this information. In addition, psychographic segmentation. So, it essentially is demographic shorthand. It's identifying what type of consumer is in your market from a demographic wage, occupation, consumer behavior attitudes, preferences, et cetera. And retailers want certain types of consumers in the market, and this is the analysis that shows them who is in the community and why they should be interested. Gap analysis, which is probably the most commonly known, is the number of dollars leaving your community on an annual basis for grocery and sporting goods and other categories. This information is critically important. But for fast food, full-service restaurants, and others, gap analysis really doesn't hold a lot of weight, simply because gap analysis is looking at the number of dollars leaving the community, meaning if McDonald's and Burger King were on the same corner, a gap analysis may say that's probably not the best thing to happen. However, they want to be on the same corner because that's what the consumer pattern is, and there's a critical mass that happens where if McDonald's line is back up, then you may say, I only have 15 minutes for lunch, I'm going to go to Burger King. So, they like that center, being close to each other. So, to help kind of combat that, but also to identify realistic opportunities in each community, we do a peer analysis, where we look at communities throughout the region to identify similar communities from a population, daytime population, gross leasable area, so the number of square feet that's in your market, and market supplies, so what is going on in the market in terms of retailers doing business, and compare you to similar communities so that we can see that you are underdeveloped by 100,000 square feet of retail space, and you need 120 million in market supply to be the analog average for your peers. And then we take that a step further to identify, okay, how do you stack up when we go from category to category? So, as you can see, this particular community was lacking eight food and dining establishments. So, we go in and identify, what are those eight dining establishments that like cities like this market but haven't yet located? And that's a great way to approach a retailer with, hey, look, we know you're in six similar markets, why haven't you get located in El Reno, Oklahoma? And it's typically is, we haven't found the right site. And that's what we hear more times than not, and we ask the question, knowing the answer, when was the last time you looked? And typically, the answer is a year or two ago, because they're not actively searching markets every day. They're waiting for their phone to ring, and that's why communities see so much value in retail strategies, because we are the ones who are ringing those phones to those retailers that we have connections with, which we have a rolodex of 9,000 retailers where they want to expand their site selection criteria and who to contact. We're contacting those people on an annual basis, probably not on a daily basis for your behalf. But again, that leads me to the real estate analysis of putting our feet in your market to completely understand it, its real estate, underutilized strategic real estate assets. So, we identify, again, development opportunities, redevelopment opportunities, vacant space. Obviously, we look at all the signs of who are the key brokers in the market. We talk to you, who are the key developers that have worked in the community before, and we start an outreach to them. Then again, obviously, community input incredibly important because we want to help you build the community you want to live in. And I know Watertown has a unique community, and we're going to have to tailor our approach to fit what you guys need. So, all of what I just said goes into the retail strategy, which is actionable strategies to attract targeted businesses to your market. And again, it's taking you through the highlights of what I just took you through, so your key demographic data points, your gap analysis, peer analysis, retail prospects, which is the most fun portion of the entire strategy, because we're talking about who we think we can get to open in your market over the course of a partnership. And this is an example of one of the pages of what a limited-service restaurant, fast casual restaurant, would look like if we presented it to you. It's an understanding of what the category is, and then the expanding retailers that would be attracted to a market like yours. So, what all I've just taken you through is about a 90-day timeline. If you guys hired us today, it would be 90 days, because the conference schedule really ramps up in October. But a lot of communities that hire us in October, it's better for us to be at these conferences representing you than it is to be sticking to a 90-day timeline, because it benefits the community more for us to prepare to meet with somebody face-to-face than to present a presentation. But it's roughly a 90-day timeline. And then again, against that proactive retail improvement, this would be your implementation team. So, as you can see, we're going to dedicate at minimum nine people to be working on this partnership on a daily basis, connecting the dots with retailers, brokers, developers, to attract them into your market. We attend conferences nationwide. The mayor attended the largest one of the year, which is in Las Vegas, but there are other critical ones. Chicago, which is in October of this year, will be very beneficial, as well as New York City, which is the national show, will be very beneficial to Watertown. We create a marketing guide for you, and this marketing guide is based upon our 180-plus years of retail real estate experience. This answers the top 10 questions that a retailer or broker is going to ask us in our initial conversations. So, this is meant to, not to completely sell your community, but to answer the initial questions so that we can get that next conversation, which is, send me a site, send me the demographics on that site. And again, we know what retailer wants, which demographics, and how to package it. And then, the flip side of this document is your market aerial view, which the mayor already has a great-looking aerial view of Watertown, but it's just showing a retailer, hey, we're looking at this site next to Walmart on Highway 65. So, we can show the retailer where the site is, and again, going back to my gap analysis discussion, retailers like to locate one near one another. So, if we can show them that the co-tenancy that they typically like to have is next to them, then it's going to bode well for the community. And then the most important part, the most fun part for Beth and I is the results in growth. So, again, we're going to present a strategy to you after 90 days. That strategy is the starting line, it's not a final document. Your market's going to change, retail's going to change, the economy's going to change, whoever our president is, that's going to change in November. So, we have to continuously update. Retail expansion and trends. Each month, we offer the opportunity for our clients to get on a webinar with retail real estate industry leaders. Thus far this year, we've had Smash Burger, Smoothie, Kmart, Hibbert's Sporting Goods, and others. But in addition, we update you on, if Kmart's going out of business in certain areas, we update you on that. In addition, we're your research concierge. Any research you need, you just call us, and we're going to get it to you. So, I'm going to take you through a brief success story that's not too terribly far from where you guys are located in Moline, Illinois, Dick's Sporting Goods. So, during our market analysis, we identified that sporting goods was an opportunity from a gap analysis. From a peer community perspective, we identified that most peer communities had an academy or a Dick's. And then we, when we're looking at the real estate, we said, you know what, they have a piece of real estate that could attract a big-box retailer. So, in the strategy, we outlined that Dick's was a major prospect, it was a prospect for a particular site, and then the psychographic shows that the Dick's consumers are in the market. So, we began reaching out proactively recruiting. So, the Portfolio Director called on the mall manager in Moline, Illinois. The retailer recruiter started calling on Dick's, and we leveraged relationships. And Dick's Sporting Goods signed an LOI to open in the South Park Mall in Moline, Illinois. And Dick's averages 10-plus million in sales per store, adds 50-plus jobs, and took an underutilized piece of real estate in Moline, Illinois, and added a major national tenant that is very good-accredited, and the community really rallied behind it. So, again, the same process that I've just discussed with you that we would take on behalf of your community is the same process we took in Moline, obviously tailoring it to their needs and their real estate. So, what the broker in the market who did the Dick's Sporting Goods deal says is that all retail strategies is doing is maximizing the opportunities for Moline to get potential users in the market. And the reason for that is that he, Jeff Miller, not only leases space in Moline, he leases spaces in several other markets. And he doesn't, you know, pick one or the other because of who the city is, but because of Retail Strategies, we're able to put Moline on a platform that they could not be on using the private sector. In addition, you know, Ray and the city of Moline gave us all the credit in the world in the paper, saying, you know, we're the people who came in and closed the deal, which we don't want to pound our chests that much. We certainly were able to leverage relationships and work and do exactly what we promised the city of Moline to create this end result for them. So, I just gave you a ton of information, and I'm going to kind of take you through some key takeaways if some of it is lost. Research is critical, but real estate's always going to win. You need to enlist real estate professionals to help you identify opportunities, because research is just going to tell you what's right and what's wrong. It's not going to help you do a lot to fix it. Retail recruitment is a challenge. These, and it's the next pull-up point, too, you know, retail recruitment's not an event. Recon's great. We have 250-plus meetings with retailers, brokers, and developers on behalf of our clients, but deals get done at recon, but not every deal is recon. The process takes time, and we do our best to help manage expectations. But, you know, the good thing for Watertown is that 70% of retailers are going to expand this year. So, it's a great time to get into the game. So, to close, Beth and I have done a tremendous amount of research on Watertown. I've met with the mayor on multiple occasions, and there's no question, there's a lot of potential, and we hope that we can be, have the privilege of being your partner to help bring that home. So, with that, I'll stop talking and go back to my camera and see if you guys have any additional questions for me.
Matt, I think I'll open this up for conversation with anybody on the council that wants to ask questions. I do have one quick question, though, for you, Matt. What sets you apart from the Buxtons?
So, Buxton, without saying anything negative about them, is an analytical research firm who wants to sell you an app, who wants to sell you data, who wants to tell you that they can introduce you to retailers at ICSC events and things of that nature. But what I'm here to tell you is that time is your most critical resource, and they aren't giving you time. What they're doing is putting more work on your plate to go out to these retail establishments and try to speak a language that you aren't used to speaking, which is the commercial real estate language. So, what we're providing, not only is the world-class, industry-leading research and analytics, but also real estate acumen and experience, and a team that's going to go implement this strategy on your behalf, we're also less expensive than Buxton is.
Matt, I have a question for you. And perhaps you've already shared this with the mayor, but do you have a list of similar communities to Watertown, or the type of community that we are, and the successes that you've had, the different retail places that you have recruited for them?
Absolutely. So, I would say that Woodward, Oklahoma is similar, and so is Liberal, Kansas. I can shoot you some articles from both. And both, we have helped recruit a restaurant to each market. We are only a year and a half into Liberal. They've also had a Walmart neighborhood market locating Liberal. Woodward, again, we have a restaurant that's going to locate within the community, and we're helping them with several others. What I will tell you is that our contracts are year-to-year. We ask for a three-year commitment, but we know we can't bind you to a multi-year agreement. So, each one of those contracts has been renewed each year, and each one of those clients is tremendously happy. But Woodward and Liberal are both, like you, essentially, you're in Highland Market. You serve such, probably at least an hour drive time as both of those communities do.
Let me ask you another question. How many communities, or, yeah, how many communities do you currently work with in this community?
Current, we have 113 communities, active communities in our book of business. We have 26 employees. So, again, it's a five-to-one, maybe even a little less than that staff-to-client ratio.
Typically, in, let's say we would agree to sign on with you guys, typically, how long does it take you guys to really get going and start seeing some results, or, I know that's kind of maybe a tough question to answer, but...
It is. It's always a double X question, especially because I don't have the media there. I've been quoted before saying something that I did not say. So, I'm going to try to answer this question as easily as I can.
Yeah, Matt, I thought, our guys wouldn't do that, would they? Huh? No, they wouldn't do that. They wouldn't do it to you, Matt.
To give you a definite timeline would be advantageous. If I knew what retailers were going to locate Watertown, when and where, I'd just go do those deals. Typically, again, it's a 90-day ramp-up period. Because we just came back from recon, you know, we've had a lot of movement in a lot of our client communities. Just today alone, we identified a grocer that told us, we want to be on this site, help us get there. So, results, meaning new businesses coming out of the ground, you're talking two to three years, just because it's multiple parties, it's multiple uncontrollable variables, it's lawyers, it's everything. Knowing that retailers are interested, that's going to happen in the first, you know, six to 12 months. Now, because what we do in our industry, loose lips sink ships. If a property owner knows what tenant's interested, their price could go up, which can mess up the deal. So, from a recording standpoint, we have one or two main points of contact who know exactly what's going on in the market. But we also provide recording, letting you know, hey, there's a grocer interested in the market, there's three restaurants interested in the market. So, we do it in a way that we can share with you, but it's not going to prohibit you from attracting those retailers to the community. But to answer your question even further, have we had new retailers located in the first year? Yes. But that wasn't Retail Strategies pumping up the ball and putting the ball on field. That was, the retailer was interested in a specific site, and we helped close the deal. But again, from start to finish, a typical retail real estate transaction is anywhere from 18 to 36 months, depending on the size of the retailer. A Dunkin' Donuts will be quicker, a Target will be much longer.
Matt, you probably said earlier in your presentation, how long has your business been in existence?
We have been established as Retail Strategies for five years. We, this was an idea that we had, that our principals had for 10 years, and they were asked by a city in Alabama to come in and help them recruit retail. They recruited Home Depot, and Home Depot did their first small-market stores, the smallest store, the first store in the smallest market they had ever done, and that was about six or seven years ago. So, then they put the wheels in motion for Retail Strategies, and what we identified was that they were our competitors of ours, and I say competitors loosely, because we do compete over the same dollars from communities, but they take a completely different approach. You know, we've developed this company in such a way that we can provide value to you through quality of service and quality of deliverables. So, while we've been around for four years, we've hired industry professionals. Joe Kacharski, who runs our Green Bay, Wisconsin office, he was the primary site selector for Costco, he was the primary site selector for our VP of Real Estate of ShopCo, Hometown, Office Depot, and others. We just hired a guy named Bo Young, and Bo's been in the industry for 25-plus years doing development and leasing. Beth has been in the industry for 10 years. So, while Retail Strategies, as an established company, has been around for five years, the people that we've hired have been in this industry for a long time.
You mentioned one of the characteristics of Watertown being more a highway community. What else have you learned about us, and what challenges do you see that we face?
So, challenges is, will be distribution. Without, I think that that's going to be a challenge, to identify who has the distribution capabilities to get to the community. I'm looking at my notes here. The good thing for you is that you have a lot of great national tenants that are there, Target, Buffalo Wild Wings, Jimmy John's, others. So, our job is going to be to connect the dots with retailers who may be unfamiliar with your market, because we're just going to, the reality is, it's not an easy market to get to. So, we're going to have to bring the real estate and package it and put it on their doorstep and do the homework for them. So, the difficult part for retailers is not, is why partnering with us would be a very good move for the community, because we can take what makes going into Watertown difficult, its location, and make that very easy for a retailer to understand.
Do you see a lot of the major box...
Challenges of entering a market in distribution is, but that's not a Watertown problem, that's in every market.
Do you see a lot of the major corporations, box stores, that are starting to downsize into the smaller communities, such as Kohl's, and organizations such as that?
Yes. So, downsizing is the wrong word, because that was here on Wall Street. The term is right sizing. But they have done smaller format stores and understood that, or, after, post-recession, or, let's talk about the recession. The recession was all about major metros, right? Because it's no-brainer decisions, as long as the real estate makes sense, major metros have the population density. But what they've identified is that, you know, coming out of the recession, they can be just as successful in Watertown as they can be in other communities, especially some of the suburbs and secondary, tertiary markets. So, yes, they are doing smaller format stores. I got an update today about another slew of clothing and apparel stores downsizing their footprint, or right sizing their footprint to do smaller formats so that they can enter more markets.
Matt, I have another question. In your presentation, you had mentioned that you involve real estate folks in your process. What exactly would their role be in this process?
So, we have our Beth, who would be your primary main point of contact. Beth will be everything Watertown. Clay Craft will be your retail development director. Clay Craft will be everything Watertown, calling on property owners, brokers, developers, retailers. Brandon Cummings, Ford Fitz, retail development associates, they're going to be doing a lot of the hunting for retailers. Clay's essentially, is tasked with your community to work on the real deals that are in the market. We have people behind him that are drumming up the opportunities. The executive team, myself, Lacey Beasley, Robert Childley, and Meade Sillsby, we are here to support Beth, Clay, and the rest of the team. Typically, Meade or Robert's in on the boots-on-the-ground analysis. But at these conferences, if there's a, you know, an opportunity that, you know, Clay needs help with, or somebody needs help with, we jump in on those meetings. I mean, the mayor saw recon, we had 14 tables that were booked from 10 to 4 for the two-and-a-half-day period, and, you know, it's a collaboration, it's a team effort. We give you dedicated professionals like Beth to be there every day, but we also, you know, leverage the connections across the country. We have a grocer that's located in Colorado that is really active in the southeast right now, so the person who has that connection is helping the person who's working in the southeast leverage that today. So, we give you essentially three to four dedicated people that Watertown is on their list every day, but then we also have a back-end support of the rest of the team to make opportunities happen.
Matt, I have a question. In regards to communities that you have worked with, what would the closest community be to Watertown? And how do you work with communities that might be within a competing market area?
That's a great question. Closest to Watertown would probably be, I would guess, Dubuque, Iowa would be the closest, just off the top of my head. And to answer your second question, we don't. And to answer your second question, we don't. If Watertown has a direct competitor, we will not go work with the direct competitor. It's a conflict of interest to us. Again, we want to lock arms with you and be your long-term partner, and that's not a good way to start a partnership, is to go after the city next to you that competes every day with you. So there's a language in the agreement that we would sign that would prohibit us from going and doing that. But I'll tell you that we would never even need that language, because we're not gonna do that to you.
One last question I have is, now, some of those names that you showed up there as far as prospective businesses or companies, a number of those are franchise-type companies. Do you, in those cases, do you work with the namesake company? Let's just use McDonald's as example. Or do you use, or do you communicate, I should say, with franchisee people? That would be maybe already owned stores, that type of thing? How do you work with them?
Yeah, so there's a couple ways of going about it. One is, we know which retailers are franchise organizations and which retailers are not. But you essentially, there's two ways of figuring out. You can go into the market and know that this is the franchisee for this area, or you can call the retailer and they'll direct you to the franchisee that has already purchased the rights to that area. So we'll go work both ways. If we need to work with corporate, because it's a corporate store, we'll go to corporate. If we need to work with franchisee, who's purchased the rights to your area, we're gonna go work with the franchisee.
Matt, out of that 70% of the people that are looking, or the businesses that are looking to expand, what percentage are looking for communities? Agriculture communities of 25,000 people with radius of 100,000?
To put that in an exact percentage, I cannot do. But what I will tell you is that in markets like Watertown, looking at our retail recruitment efforts, it is not uncommon to see upwards between 75 and 100 retailers that have been contacted, you know, over a two- or three-year period. I would say that, you know, starting out, there would be between 40 and 50 retailers that we would target. And look, we could make you a list as long as you want, but the reality is, there's only about 30 to 50 opportunities that would be expanding, that we can capture on your behalf on a yearly basis. So it's a matter of, it's a numbers game here. You know, we want fish in the pond that's got the most fish that are expanding. So it's all based upon what retailers are looking for, who's expanding. But essentially, in the first year, we will at minimum contact, you know, 50 retailers on your behalf with specific sites. And that's, that's one of the things I need to mention, is that we can't just contact a retailer and say, what do you think about Watertown? Because that retailer is gonna get mad that we just asked about a community. They want to see a site, they want to see a deal, because that's how they're paid, is by getting deals done, by locating new retailers. So our job is to identify the real estate in your market, which retailers fit, and then promoting that to them as a, you know, as a good expansion opportunity for them.
So Matt, when you said that you wanted to look at a site and such, are you, would you then come out here and kind of take an inventory of what's available and what we have to offer?
Exactly, that would be done within the first 90 days. More than likely, it would be myself and Clay Craft, or another one of our members of our executive teams, and Clay Craft. We like Clay, who again, would be the retail development director, to be able to put his eyes on the market. He's tasked with promoting and with attracting new business too. So yes, that would happen within the first 90 days. And we have some of that to utilize for that as well.
All right, I've got some time here. If there's anybody from the audience wants to come up and ask Matt a question, I'm open for that, because you might have a question that we're not thinking of. Mike, David, any of you guys? I'm open. Tim, come on up, show me your taser and whack one of us. Anybody else? You guys got any questions that you want to ask him? Well, if not, well, Matt, thank you. I tell you, we have got a couple, for sure, one other firm that'll be coming here in a couple of weeks that we'll be discussing, and then we will, because there's never any thing decided or action taken at a work session. So what we'll do is, we'll visit with other folks and, we didn't discuss numbers, but you have some numbers to communicate. Yeah, Matt, you'll be sending us a proposal of what the costs are and things such as that.
Perfect, that sounds great.
Yeah, that would be good. Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it. It went very, very well, thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Y'all great.
Is he gone? I have a little story for you guys, which I thought was quite interesting. John and I had a meeting with a guy that does the same stuff, and his website looked very good and everything looked really nice. And he said, I forget his name, if it was Mickey or Ricky or something like that. He said, I'll call you, Mayor, when I've got opening now. So about 10 o'clock, we got a call, and he says, well, come up the escalator. This is huge buildings, there's thousands and thousands of square feet of this stuff. And he says, come up the escalator, hang a right, then hang a left, and when you see two shoe shine booths, I'm right in the middle. So I really assumed that he was gonna have like a booth there. We get up there, we go up the escalator, we hang a right, we hang a left, and we're seeing this guy. He's standing there with a friend of his with a briefcase in his hand. He says, I want to work for Watertown. I'm thinking, okay, yeah. So I will tell you, we had much better interviews than that particular one. Just a little heads up, and I like these people, I think we have questions. I think when you see the next, the next company that will come out here and give us a presentation, I think you'll be very happy with that one. So anyhow, we're gonna move on. Discussion on conversion of one-way streets to two-way streets in the downtown area. Shane, you kind of brought this up to us. You wanted to bring this on the work session and give us a little heads up, what you're seeing and what's going on.
Yeah, I thought it would at least be good to discuss the issues that we would have to look at in doing the conversion from one-way to two-way. And thanks to technology, we can actually all ride in the same vehicle together via the internet. So with that, I'll just jump right in here. This is.
Shane, maybe we should be clear that this isn't anything that says we're gonna do two-way streets.
No, this is, this is just the concepts of what would take to do it.
What would take place if they were to make that decision.
The type of things we need to look at, yeah. So this is the intersection of East Kemp, looking back to the east, and Highway 81, of course, is the crossing street here. First thing that jumps out at you is, if this was going to support traffic moving in all four directions, is there is no mast arm hanging out over here that has a traffic light on it. So we would have to visit with the DOT folks and design a system that added another leg here, if we're in fact gonna keep another street, or keep the street light versus a four-way stop. And I think what we'll find is that these intersections are gonna be busy enough that we'll want to maintain the traffic lights. But, so that jumps out, that'd be one thing. And then as you look going forward, you know, there's street signs that are all facing the same direction. So we'd have to identify what street light, yeah. Obviously, somebody was driving the wrong way.
We're thinking, I'm thinking it's Mike's truck last year, yeah.
Yeah, this is a, for instance. Yeah, I thought that was ironic as well, but somebody pre-testing our ideas here. But, so we would identify the street signs. As you can see, there's yellow markings on the. Fortunately for me, they blur all that stuff out, so I can't be accused of that. But yellow paint here would indicate that there'd be a no parking sign from here to corner type of sign. We'd have to get rid of all the one-way signs along the route. Couple key things, of course, we have to change the striping. These would be angled the opposite direction of they are. Centerline stripes would have to be yellow, not white, and probably be a double yellow line to be consistent with no passing zone type things. Just going through my list. We'd have to reverse all these traffic signs that, these are hanging on both sides of the street. A sign like this, I'll get down to another example. See that signs are facing the wrong way? So we would spin those around and get those headed the right direction. We'll have to look at all of these handicap parking spaces and maybe adjust those a little bit to make sure that they stay accessible for the handicap folks. So that kind of stuff. We would convert these intersections up here.
I think most of the handicaps are by the alleys, right? Because, so they can have the extra room.
Typically, but, but when you reverse your street signage, then that parking space would hang out in front of the alley. So I have to move it from one's, one location to another. So that's the kind of minor things that we would have to tweak along.
I was just curious, you say double yellow lines, why would we need lines at all?
Well, normally, we wouldn't, but if we're gonna push people closer together in this district, we'd probably want a line to just kind of indicate whose space is what. Because right now, what you'll see, even though they're traveling the same direction, people crowd or over, drive over that white dash line that's there now. And that's an issue. If you're gonna have them coming opposing each other, you want to kind of define where the true center is.
Are you gonna put the angled parking, probably would be a stronger angle, you think, or?
Yeah, that would be something we'll have to look at, yeah. And that, those are details that are even finer than what we're talking about now. But yeah, that's, that's the general ideas that we're talking about here. Even with that, you know, the existing striping would either need to be scrubbed off the roadway by either grinding them off, or power washing, or something. One way to quick, do that quicker that we're considering is whether or not we would just seal coat the street, cover up all the paint lines, and then repaint everything the way we would want them. So there's some options that we have to talk about, but there again, that's the finer end of the design. We would propose that these stoplights be removed and just four-way stops put in, rather than continue with the stoplights. Mostly because I don't think that we're gonna have the pressure of a lot of volume going through these intersections. It's just as quick to stop and go and wait, take your turn. Here, it's not like we have blocks and blocks of traffic stacked up behind these. So that would be one of the things that we would want to consider doing. Run up to the next intersection. One of the things we need to talk about too is, these tall poles that had the mast arms on them for the, for the traffic signals also contain a crisscrossed wire here that hangs Christmas decorations and other community event banners. So we would have to think about whether we would want to retain those poles for that purpose, or if that's something that would go away and we would redo the Christmas decorations a different way, or things. So kind of things that you probably wouldn't normally identify with changing a one-way to a two-way. But, so that's kind of the stuff that we're, we'll put together a plan if we decide to go forward with this thing, and kind of decide how they would be implemented and when. And then when we're ready, then we would ask for the switch to go from a one-way to a two-way. But Broadway intersection's very similar to Maple, it has the crisscross wires up here again. They're hard to see in this view, but they're there. Again, we would do a four-way stop sign arrangement here, not a stoplights. Just an example of a handicap spot that wouldn't be able to function exactly like it is today is, this would have to start over here and come out. So this marking sign would have to be moved over to a new location, and then we, of course, have to design that so that they can back out safely without backing over the crosswalk type of situation. So those are the minor details that become important when you look at the overall scope of making a conversion like we're considering here. And, you know, one other thing to identify is, these bigger signage pieces that were attached to those mast arms will go away as well. So thankfully, we have smaller signage also in the intersection, but, you know, they're gonna be less identifiable than the big sign. But, so just little things like that. You get down to the other end of this project, and then there's some other unique things that we gotta deal with. There's a lot of cars on the street today, or when this photo was done. Heading down to the end. Okay, so all of this striping here would need to be reconfigured according to the new traffic pattern. And, you know, again, you get to the other side of the roadway, and there's that double line that we talked about, you know, and these arrows would change. The double line is kind of what you would see in a situation when you're trying to define the centerline. Whoop, I went too far. There's some signs here that, too, that need to be removed. You can see signs that do not enter and restrict the turning movements, so all those would be removed or adjusted accordingly. So I'll just quickly take you the opposite direction down first.
Shane, while you're moving, I believe I heard in one of the previous discussions on this, that they'll do away with all those big overhead lights. They'll be more of a lamppost thing, is that the case?
Well, they're, at the intersections where those are attached to mast arms, they might go away. Otherwise, that's a different level of discussion for this. I think that's something that would probably come more out of a downtown revitalization project, where you change your lighting to something else, rather than do that just because you're changing traffic patterns. But it certainly can be implemented together, but I think it's a separate discussion.
Shane, or Mayor, is this strictly a local decision? And the reason I ask that question, I'm dating myself. I remember back when Herb Jensen was mayor, we thumbed our nose at some federal regulation concerning traffic flow or parking on Kemp Avenue, because it made Paul Harvey National News for a time. Is there anything that, I mean, is this strictly our decision to make?
My understanding, it is our decision. Yep. One of the things to kind of go on, this is gonna be in front of you guys tonight with the Strong Towns engagement. Strong Towns is actually going to come up here and also talk about the two-way straights, you know, whether it be Kemp or First Avenue. It'll be a big discussion. He was really involved with the charrette that was just recently done. So we'll be asking for that to come up and give us a little more insight as to if we should or should not even consider these. But back to that, Glenn, I just, I have not heard of any other. People have said that to me, I think David Law, you asked me that, didn't you?
I remember hearing something about that, that there was some federal funds used in some fashion or other when that was converted, and whether that means we gotta get some kind of a okay from somebody, or if that timeline's long since passed and doesn't make any difference anymore, I don't know.
It's kind of like who goes to jail. Probably the guy that's driving backwards on Kemp Avenue. That's what I'm thinking.
Well, my first step will be to reach out to the DOT and let them know that we're considering something like this, and ask them. The first question is, if they agree or not to let us change those intersections, especially as they encounter Highway 81, because that changes their use as well. And. And, and we'll see a little bit more when I get back over on that end, on First Street, but, or First Avenue. But, anyway, that's the first step, I think, for me, is to reach out to them and let them know we're even thinking about it, and get some feedback, and then, and then go from there.
Shane, I think you wanna check with Rob on that, because I know Rob, me and Rob have had quite a few discussions over this, especially on First Avenue South. He has reached out to DOT and has had their blessing on First Avenue South, so.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, Rob and I are working on this together. This isn't just an engineering project, this is a project for both of us to work on together.
Shane, typically speaking, does a two-way driving lane, is it typically wider than a driving lane for, you know, two parallel, going in the same direction one ways?
Not really. Typically, we try to keep a, a minimum lane width of about eleven feet.
No matter what direction, whether you got two of them going this way, or two going the same way?
When it's oppo- opposing, it is desirable to have a twelve-foot lane or, or more. But, you know, most rural highways is a twelve-foot lane going opposite directions at fifty miles an hour or more. So, it's not an uncommon thing to feel like you're enclosed in town when you do change it to opposing traffic. But, in reality, it's almost the same dimensions as you're used to out on the highway.
What, what is it down there now?
We could get eleven-foot lanes, I think, especially if we play with the angle of the parking a little bit.
But, you don't think we have that today, though?
We have approximately fifty feet from curb face to curb face to work with. And so, if you take the twenty-two feet out of that, you only have roughly thirty-some feet left, and that's what our parking.
Hey Shane, the, the, one of the reasons I understand, I read, was for a lot of the, of the one-way streets is that the left-hand turn issue. If you have two-way, it slows traffic down, is there any opportunity for us, we have to take up some parking spots for a, if we wanted to set up a left-hand turn lane? Is that even feasible for us to do that?
Yeah, there again, I don't know that there's enough traffic pe- pressure to necessitate that. I will say that in, in a lot of situations where you have that, and somebody's going straight, the presumption is, is that if you're turning right, you get, you're allowed to pull up to the right of that first vehicle and make your turn. And I think PD would probably back me up, and that's a wrong presumption, but people do it all over. Probably not the safest idea, when you could wait two seconds and be the next first car in line to make that turn. But, to be honest with you, I mean, I drive this route every day to work and home and back, and very rarely is there more than three cars sitting in an intersection waiting to proceed through it. So, I, I don't see a lot of pressure on it, and I, I assume I'm driving through it some of the higher pressure times, you know, eight o'clock in the morning, and noon, and five, you know, so I, I just don't see the pressure there.
Shane, I was gonna make a comment, too, I know that we talked about wherever we got a light right now, would we, would we envision four-way stops at every corner?
Sure.
So, I, I will tell you, if you've been in Brookings, which you're a South Dakota State man, right?
Yeah.
You go down Main Street, I don't have a problem with that, you gotta stop every time, every time, every time. You get off to the side streets, and their signage and what they have for stop signs and not-stop signs, and, and it's confusing as heck when you get, they've got so darn many signs and, and corners you gotta stop at that you... It gets, it, it really is, maybe it's just my age and my driving skills, but it really, it's dumbfounded a little bit when you're there.
Yeah, well, it's a change in philosophy, because what the charrette and, and others try to tell us and advise us is that they want you to stop, they want you to look at the storefronts, they want you to see what's downtown, rather than just race through it to get to the other side of town. And that's the philosophy change that would instigate change from a one-way street to a two-way street. They, they encourage breaking the traffic down into segments, so that you stop and look.
One of the other issues on that same, same scenario is that without the traffic being able to stop at each intersection, it's a much dangerous, much more dangerous environment for pedestrians and bicyclists. So, by being able to just kinda keep going straight, a lot of times, it's more differe- and you can, I see it downtown a lot, where people have trouble navigating across, you know, but whereas if you have a stop sign at each corner, I think, like he said, you're slowing traffic down, you're giving people an opportunity to see what's there, and you're making it much more pedestrian and bicycle friendly. And if we're gonna continue to encourage people to live downtown, to shop downtown, to own places downtown, you want it to be pedestrian-friendly, you know, so that's a, I think that's a, a thing to keep in mind as well.
I, I think, Mike, to your comment there, though, part of this discussion's gonna be, obviously Kemp needs to be slowed down, but the two First Avenues where they're, I mean, obviously, the one behind us, I think, probably that, if you're gonna wanna get through town and not stop down, you're not going on Kemp. You know, that's, you're going on Kemp because you're downtown to do business, or you wanna take a drive-through, whatever. The next question is the other First Avenue, is that, you know, the stop signs maybe are on the side streets and, and the first goes through. So, I think there's gonna need to be some talk about that.
Yeah, First, First Avenue, as far as I know, the only intersections where it stops is at this intersection I have up here with, of Broadway. I think otherwise, it's, it's pretty much a straight through all the way.
The, the school would probably end up needing to have stop signs maybe with the, at the school down there.
Look at that, that, that's true, but right now, there's no stop sign, and, but the traffic's only from one direction, so they only have to look one way to determine whether it's a safe crossing or not. So, yeah, that, that could be another issue that we'd have to look at. But, we'll continue driving down, there's no, most of the items are the same, going the opposite direction. Now, here's a intersection, this, I mean, up here is the stoplight, and here, there isn't. And I never see a car parked here for more than a few seconds. I mean, it's pretty much a stop, make sure you're clear, and you're going forward. So, I don't see a lot of pressure to keep those stoplights in place. But, there are a couple churches along here, so, you know, we might wanna be mindful of their traffic patterns as well. I mean, the IC School, Good Points. Here, we allow the angle parking again through here. There's that pedestrian crossing, I'll back up. Because of the school, it does have the pedestrian, and, and if we switch the traffic, this turn, sign will get turned around, so that you see it from the other direction. But, but, yeah, this, if warrants needed it, we could make that into a four-way stop if, if we decide that we wanna create a soft, or safer crossing. But, so those are the kinds of ideas that we have to think about and talk about.
Shane, typically, do you, do you lose spots? I've heard that when you change the traffic pattern, you know, to two-way, that you would lose parking spots.
We may lose a couple here and there, but generally not. I mean, they're pretty, pretty even, because you're just changing how they lay out. In other words, you might lose one at the south end of the block and gain one at the north end of a block. But, just because you're, the way you flip the lines, you should end up with generally the same amount of spots.
What about delivery vans, like uptown, I see them parked all the time up there, you know, and...
Yeah, and that, that's the...
I don't, I don't know if they were there years ago, or if they parked up on the street side, or what.
Well, things are changing a little bit. Back in, probably even not that far back, I mean, in our lifetimes, we could probably remember when deliveries came in a smaller straight truck and probably fit down the alleys real well. And that mentality's changing now, we're getting the bigger semis, making deliveries. I mean, for sure, the, all the material that's coming into the Slumberland store and unclaimed freight stores are larger vehicles, they aren't the smaller straight truck, truck anymore. So, you do make this conversion, that is one thing that they've had a luxury of being able to park on one side and allowing traffic to go by them on the opposite side and, and stay in the same direction. So, that's something that you would be giving up i- if the conversion's made, and we'll have to have that full discussion on the, how disruptive may that be, or may that not be. And, and maybe what the real answer is there is that we continue to improve these alleys and encourage the trucks to use the alleys or side streets more. You know, pull onto a Maple, or pull onto Second Street, or whatever, and wheel something around the corner a little bit further.
It seems to me that, the times I've run into trucks downtown, they've been on the Maple, or they're not on Kemp. I, I can't say that I've seen it on Kemp much.
Right.
Both the ones you mentioned with Slumberland and, and Unclaimed Freight, most of their stuff comes in through the alley, through the back doors, so.
Yeah, but it is difficult for them to get onto the alley, I mean, I, I have identified that. So, the, I mean, there's lots of discussions. Here again, First Street coming up to Highway eighty-one, we'll have to change all of the striping. This sign probably wouldn't be necessary, this sign wouldn't be necessary. In this case, there are the proper lights on all legs, but we probably have to re-set loops in here to function, to allow the trigger mechanisms to go appropriate to what you want your traffic patterns to be. So, so if you wanted a, this would probably be a, a left turn only, and this would probably be a straight right type of situation, instead of a straight, because here you have the left, a straight, and a le- a right. But, so that's the kinda stuff that we gotta talk about. As far as impacts to the highway, I'll go down this way and just show you. See, this is traditionally the turning lane, and it's striped to not allow the left turn onto First Avenue. This would have to be, all be changed to the typical center-left turn lane to allow that movement again. And that's where our partnership with the DOT and those kinda things are critical, to make sure that they, they agree to us changing the traffic patterns on their road as well, so.
I will tell you, just like when you saw me driving the wrong way on that other street, there is a lot of traffic that turns off this highway, up this street.
Yeah, and, and for us that are locals, that have been driving it for a long time, I would say that there's probably very little errant driving on average. But, there's always that person that does get confused, forgets which intersection they're on, or if they're from out of town, they certainly could get easily turned around. And, so, we're gonna have to think about that backwards, because we're gonna have to re-educate our locals that'll use these streets every day and often, that, yeah, that is two-way again, and, you know, that, so it, it's gonna take a little bit of a PR campaign, too, to kinda remind people that we've changed their normal activity and patterns.
We discussed this a while back already on First Avenue portion, and my, my two cents would be that obviously, we consider both, and I think both end up be the end result, but I think we deal with First Avenue first, and get that, if we're gonna do it, do that first. Because some of the other discussion on Kemp was maybe doing some bump outs at the intersections and other things, and maybe that should just be planned as part of the whole process. So, if you're gonna do anything with signage and all that, otherwise, you're gonna put signage in and then end up having to move it and other things. So, where First Avenue, I don't perceive there'd be that type of thing going on. Plus, that gives people a little bit of opportunity to start getting used to that one changing, and it just, just my feelings on that.
I would tend to agree with that, that, that would be, the way I'd like to see it proceed is, is at least start with one, and, and it'd be a lot easier to educate people that way as, as to what our changes are, so.
Shane, do we know what kind of, i- if we took the two streets that we're talking about, and we went up and down to every one of those businesses that was there, do we know what kinda support there is for this today? I know that, there's some of it's devil in the detail, right? So, I can understand where some might be skeptical or against it, but do we know what kinda support we have today?
Other than the discussion that came out of the charrette, I don't know any specifics. I'm sure there's probably, you know, not all of them would embrace it, but I, I tend to think that probably the majority of them might.
Historically, there's been a lot of discussion against it, and I don't know if there would be or not. My, my point is, is this, it's easier to push your rope up a hill when you got seventy percent behind you pushing it. If you got seventy percent up in front of you, stopping you, then it becomes harder. And I, it would, I think we almost need to, Mayor, and whomever, I think we need to do some kind of a quick check to, just to see where we're at on that. Like, I don't think the charrette would be indicative of what the level of support is throughout the uptown area.
And that very well could be.
I, I would tend to disagree with that. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of people from the downtown area that, that were very involved in the charrette. I mean, and that was one of the, the key issues with all the discussion on the charrette, was to try to change those back to the other way. Yes, there is, I mean, after being on the Urban Renewal Board for a number of years, or a couple of years anyhow, yes, there are some people that are against it. But I would say that's a very small percentage, and, and as, there's, after the charrette and all the information that was brought forward with the charrette, there's a lot less of those people that were against it in the very beginning than are now. I mean, they do see a value in it, so.
I think that the education part of it is key, and I like the fact that next meeting, we have the gentleman from Strong Towns who can talk about the advantages and disadvantages for both. And, you know, in any case, you know, because I can understand concerns that businesses would have in both situations, but I think once a person is understanding the advantages and disadvantages of one-way streets versus two-way streets, and I know I did some research for some of you guys, and I found people who were advocates of one-way streets and people who were advocates of two-way streets. But, some of the compelling things for me, and that was reduction in crime, increase in property values, and all those things went hand in hand with conversions of one-way streets to two-way streets. Like, by traffic, pedestrian, we had, they were talking about auto thefts falling, they're doing some, some examples in some other smaller towns, auto thefts fell thirty-three percent on a, you know, on a one, two ways, once they converted it to two-way. Appreciation of businesses increased an average of eleven point six percent. Meanwhile, the one-way streets depreciated roughly point four percent over the same period of time. And I, I mean, I think those are statistics that, once we start discussing those and seeing how they apply to our uptown, our downtown and, and those businesses, and, and certainly hear from somebody who knows a whole lot more than I do, that we can, we can, again, group everybody together and say, you know, okay, light bulb, you know, maybe this does make sense, and maybe this doesn't, so.
Megan, you, you just showed up, did, did you catch Mike's question? Because I'd be interested to hear what your take is. I mean, you're downtown, and you're downtown, and you work with the businesses downtown. Do you have any thoughts on what Mike asked?
Honestly, I think, Mike, you're on the right track. I think we need to go and survey people, we've, we've heard strong opinions both ways.
Hey Megan, I hate to do this to you, but you gotta, you gotta come up here. Thank you.
As long as you're not gonna make me pray.
No praying tonight, yeah, we got that covered.
Um, I think, Mike, you're on to something. I think by going business to business, that's probably the only true, you know, we, we've heard both ways. But, going business to business and visiting with those folks and, and getting an up or down, that's gonna give us a lot better picture on, on the way people are feeling.
Well, and I think it's, it's a gauge, it's, it's a barometer for where we're at today. And I think as we learn more, we can go back to those that are opposed, or that are unsure. And then we can, then we know who we're dealing with and what we're dealing with.
Agree.
But, I think that's the only way that we know, if we...
I wanna, I, I agree, I think we do need to query those folks, but I think it'd be, if there's a way that we could provide them with some information with the, the pros and cons ahead of time, before we do that, so they do have an understanding of what the advantages would be to them to go to a two-way situation, I think that'd be helpful. And, and the other part of this, too, I think, is a good idea from the standpoint that if we move forward with this, which in my opinion, just makes all the sense in the world, I think that we get some buy-in from them. That would be important for us moving forward with this project, these projects.
If we're gonna have this other gentleman come speak to us, I'd like to see two things happen. A, a survey of those people, and then, and have the schedule for this, and have them invited, everybody, in part of that survey, be invited to come to that, so they can make comments or whatever at that time. Because I, you know, if, if there's a strong standing that doesn't like to see it, I need to have us hear their voice before we make a decision, then.
I know that we had some people who stayed with their opinion at the charrette, and then after listening to the gentleman who's coming to talk to us, we had some people convert their opinion, you know, and became believer in two ways. So, I think we're on the right track. I do like the idea that Bruce said about having pros and cons of it prior to just going around and taking a survey, because I think that would help people think about it a little bit, you know, before they made their decision. But, either... think about it a little bit, you know, before they made their decision. But either way, the survey is a nice idea.
Megan, is it from a chamber standpoint, I mean, you, um, vast majority of them, if not all of them, are chamber members, right?
Yeah, that's absolutely something we can help you with.
Would there be a way to identify them on those two streets and, and get a, come some kind of an e-survey out to them or something?
Honestly, we found, um, with uptown, downtown business owners, caught myself, um, that the best thing to do is probably canvas, just physically go door-to-door and, and carve out some time to do that. Um, so you're getting in front of the, the person that actually is the decision-maker in the business. And so, if we sort of had a timeline, we would be glad to help you with that.
We got a little bit of problem there though, too. You've got businesses, and then you've got property owners, and I think that we need to deal with both. Because a business owner might have one opinion, and the property owner another, so, and, and I think they both need to be involved, quite honestly. So, where we can identify that, we, maybe part of that survey would be, are you an owner, or, you know, and if you're not, then give us a name that we can get the, get in contact with them or something too. So, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, 'cause you're talking two different, two different groups essentially.
Megan, is there a way that we can get, gets, get the word out that we are gonna have this fellow on the twentieth? That's gonna come in so they can, can watch it on TV for tho- those folks on the-
Yeah, absolutely.
That'd be great.
Yep, we sure can. Um, do we have details on, it's, it's the next work session? Or we'll co- we can coordinate with that, Mayor?
Yeah, because we have to actually have the council approve it tonight, that we're gonna even, uh, join that contract.
So, we'll get the details. We're actually gonna be going door-to-door with a lot of businesses in the next couple days, and so if we have stuff that soon, we can get it out to them in the next day or two.
Right. Mike, what do you got?
Uh, I agree with Bill. One thing is, uh, make sure that you, you're canvassing the right people. I've had, uh, people come to me with opposition of the one-way that don't even have businesses on the one-way, uh, that are around the corner or something, and they don't want a one-way for their business, or, or the property owner. Well, it doesn't touch them physically. I think that when you do this, you wanna make sure you're talking to the people that are actually involved in, in the businesses that are touching the one-way or, or the streets that are involved, because I've, I've had a lot of opposition come from people that don't even, are, are on the other First Avenue, which has both directions, come up and tell me they don't want a one-way. Well, what does that represent to us on Kemp that do want the one-way? Because there's a lot of us that do. So, I just wanna make sure that that's, that, I agree with Bill. You gotta, you gotta talk to the decision-maker, the person that has the, the building, and, uh, because that's a, a major investment as well as the business owner. Um, invite everyone up, and, and, uh, I think, like, like the Shret came, uh, it, there's a lot of people who've changed their mind and, and, uh, want the one-way, so.
Well, thanks, Mike. So, you, you-
Want the two-way, sorry.
Well, I was, I was just gonna clarify that.
I'm all for the two-way. It takes me three blocks to get to work that I shouldn't have to drive.
Kay or Mike, did you guys wanna get up here and say a couple words, or not?
That, that was one thing that I found through a lot of the, the studies through the Urban Renewal and, and working with Shret and stuff, is a lot of the opposition we had wasn't on Kemp or First Avenue South. It was all on the side streets, so.
I guess, I appreciate-
Say your name, Kay.
Oh, Kay Silverk. Um, I just, I, I do appreciate the fact that you're going to go and ask the different merchants, because, um, I know there are also a lot of business people that are on Kemp Avenue that wanna leave it the way it is. Deliveries is a big thing. Big, big thing. Whether your stuff is coming in by UPS, FedEx, whatever, right now, if they're going like this, and a truck stops, you can go around it without worrying that you're gonna get hit from the other way. If your truck, if there's a truck sitting there, they're not gonna be going around anything, because they're gonna be sitting behind that truck the entire time that delivery guy's making the, the delivery. Um, we don't-
Yeah, I doubt I would wait that long.
But, um, the other thing is, we really cannot afford to lose any more parking spots. And if you're changing the angle, you know, it used to be when we first changed some of the angles, um, a few years ago, and we lost some of the spots. Now, the vehicles that we have people driving are bigger, the trucks are bigger. Um, I know one lady who brought her husband's vehicle, and this just happened not too long ago, and parked it, um, right on Kemp. The police came and said, your vehicle is too big for this parking spot. You gotta get it out of here and park on the side street or someplace. You cannot leave it there because it's sticking out too far. And so, um, going to a two-way, you're, that's just gonna be creating it even harder. And we just can't afford to lose more parking. Last year, we lost twelve businesses in the uptown, and this year, we've already lost four or five. And-
And, and we've had some real growth down there for other things, 'cause I know now you drive down on, on any given night, and it's pretty darn busy, but thank you, Kay.
No, I'm, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that those are things that you have to consider and think about, and, um, they are important to the business climate in the uptown.
Right. And, and we don't wanna, uh, make things any worse than what they are. We're hoping that whatever the decision is made here, you know, throughout all the surveys and everything, that it'll all work out good. Anybody else? I see back there, Mr. Cole, what's going on?
Kay, after working with, with the type of delivery company for twenty years that I did, and we worked in a lot of downtown districts, we didn't park our trucks on the street when we couldn't. I mean, if, right now, if one's parked in the middle of Kemp Avenue and, and blocking one lane, that's a violation of city ordinance, even if it is one-way.
Well, it's just a lot of businesses do not have alleys. And that, that's part of, part of the problem. There's no place for them to make deliveries to those businesses without-
Well, thanks, Kay. And Shane, thank you very much. There's a, a lot ahead of us here. I think we will, uh, I don't think, Mike, did you wanna say something? Cole? Okay. And, and drop, drop that fake accent, will you?
Okay, Steve, I'll do my best. My name is Mike Cole. I do have a numerous amount of buildings that I own downtown, um, and I am actually with Kay, um, because I do think there's gonna be a large impact on also deliveries, obstruction of traffic when they are making those deliveries. Um, and I just think, I, I'm just trying to figure out, where is the sense coming in on all this? It seems to be functioning quite well as it is. Why do we have to change it to a two-way system? You want me to smile, buddy? Right?
You've been in that hot seat before, haven't you, Mike?
I have, yeah. So, I'm asking you the question.
I think that, that, really, that question, Mike, has, has been kinda floated around on the council for two, three years.
Yeah.
And I think the Shret has, has kinda brought it to the top. So, I think we really need to, uh, uh, look at it and understand it real well before, before we've made any action.
I know from my perspective, Mike, one of the things that, when we talk about the, the change at the end of Kemp, possibly with the First Avenue and whatnot, that becomes a whole conglomeration of a mess, in my opinion. If it's a two-way, it gets way different. So, I would like to know, before we commit to making that all ramp into, to the one-way and then come back, that should be two-way. That's just a whole different configuration, in my opinion, what happens down there.
Absolutely, like you said earlier, like making First Avenue there, you know, um, turning that into a two-way to start with, is, is something possibly to look at before you even think about focusing on Kemp and see how it functions for a year or longer. But I, I feel, this is what I think, I think you're gonna have parallel parking there, and I really think, I really think that you're gonna, it's gonna create a lot of problems there. Because, like just Kay was saying, that, you know, obviously, some of these pickups, you know, extended cabs, extended boxes, they're, they're, they're a large vehicle. And if that's the only vehicle that a family has to transport their family around and come and shop in uptown, and they need to park that vehicle somewhere in that location, it's gonna be very difficult for them to do that.
We are not narrowing the streets any, though.
Uh, I, I understand that.
Yeah, and we've had parallel parking up there, and it was horrible, so we don't want that.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
And, and I would not be an opponent of-
Parallel parking isn't even in, in the thought process. I mean, we would still have same parking as we have now. We're just gonna change the angles to different directions.
It's not gonna work, Randy. I don't see it, I don't see it working. I do not see it working with the width of the roads that we have there. Because I think as we further, we go down Kemp Avenue, you go past, you get into Dr. Longworth's area there, and I feel that that road is somewhat more narrower there than what it is further, uh, east of there, actually, coming back into the uptown area. So, I think those surveys need to be done also.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's, we need to engineer the whole thing and see how it's gonna come out before we do any changes.
Let's kinda wrap this up. If there's another question or two, we'll get, uh, moving on. Any other questions that we have for any of these guys? We've still got about eight minutes before council meeting, so if you have a question, throw it out. Well, comments or questions?
Mike, I'm gonna answer your question from my perspective as to why, why is it being considered? Prior to being on the council, been on the council five years now, but prior to being on the council, I was on plan commission for about eight years. And there were a number of times, as we dealt with businesses during that time, that those individuals, whether they were the property owners or the business owners, I guess I'm not sure whether they were both or, or, but there were requests for that consideration. There's been times where we've, well, for years and years, we've talked about the revitalization of our downtown area. And I think that's part of that discussion. It's a consideration. I think that's the process we have to go through.
Absolutely.
And that's, it, this isn't Shane Waterman pushing this. I know that's who you, you turned to, but-
Well, I'm targeting him, 'cause he's sitting right next to me.
Okay, I understand, but, but I understand, but my, my point is, it's, it's not him that's pushing this.
Yes.
It's the public that has, has pushed this, and it's been chosen to get picked up via-
I think it's the Shret that's brought this more to light. That's what I feel. So, I think, yes, you must approach the business owners and also the, the actual, the landowners then, the property owners, and have their input. And then, like, like Bill was saying, probably bring everybody into the room, you know, invite everybody that evening, and have a sit-down, full discussion, to see what sort of impact this will bring. And that's what I feel.
Okay, well, thanks, Mike.
Yeah, absolutely.
Shane, thank you very much. I think, uh, folks, at this time, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and we'll be back at seven o'clock.